So I'll call, I'll call to order the Westonbury Planning Board meeting of December 3rd. And it is 7:01. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. For Zero Middle Street, that's scheduled for 7:15. So I think we should come back to that in 15 minutes.
Yep.
Just in case somebody shows up that wants to hear about that. So second item on the agenda. Is 30 and 32 Ash Street, Towns' right of first refusal pursuant to Mass General Law 61A. And basically, it's, it's. It's our duty to report back to the Select Board whether we think this particular parcel of land is worthy. Of the town's investment. I'm gonna share the screen here and put up my map.
So, so if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just wanted to point out, so the first step would be provide notice of the Board's intent to fee, to offer feedback. And then the Select Board may give you more time. If, but unless, if you feel like you can make the decision tonight, then you can just offer feedback.
Gotcha. Well, very good. God, I, you know, I was the key author of that procedure. I don't remember that, but that's good.
Been a while.
It's been a while indeed. So I assume that we intend to provide feedback. We always do. And this is the, this is the parcel.
That's one of them. I think there are two.
Yeah, 30 and 32. This is 30. Which one is 32? Is it this one right?
I think it's that one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I remember this because I remember when this got developed up here and it was. You got the power lines coming through right here. I remember this piece here. We talked about that. I mean. If it's coming out of agricultural use, I. I don't see a particular value to the town. I don't know. Why don't we, why don't we have everybody in the planning board sort of weigh in on this?
Okay.
I'll start with you, Ann.
Well, I remember when the Mrs. Kelly created these three A and R lots, all of them to the southeast of her house. And the one, the most easterly with the house on it was, has a house on it. And I think it's that. Homeowner who has executed this purchase and sale offer for the other two lots. I don't, because of the power lines. And because it's not adjacent to any other particularly useful town controlled or owned land, I would say that this. Would not be the best expenditure of the town's financial resources to purchase these.
Good, Deb.
Well, the only thing I'm observing here, putting on my equestrian hat here. Is that the parcel that is southeast of this is near. Would you click on that right there? Click, no, don't cross the street.
Adjacent to the house, in other words.
adjacent, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, Ray.
No, Ray, it's on the same side.
On the east side of the next one.
There you go.
So that's near north. And we do like to keep some trail connections. Trails are really important to. A lot of us and customarily, when the hunt rides through there. Oh, I, all right, I think we're okay. It goes up into, yeah, who owns that parcel back there? 26A.
Whoever has that house. I don't know who that is.
Farrell Farrell and Joseph Farrell.
Okay, don't know the Farrows, but my opia typically rides up and then goes left into the next parcel. No, let's see. No, they don't either. There may be a trail in there, but I, I don't see these as, I still don't see these as buildable lots. I think the purchaser is buying them. For his own protection perhaps. For the reasons that you point out, the power lines, and it's quite a steep slope. I don't have any objections.
Gotcha. Yeah, this is, I'm, I'm just now seeing this kind of farm road, but it circles around here and it comes this way.
Well, it's all Christmas tree farms.
Yeah, it was a tree farm, so.
It was solid trees, the whole, and, and now the biggest ones out in the front of the, the new house there, the lot you're on there have pretty much died. They're. They look pretty bad. And, and she does still sell some from off, up the hill there. And Mrs. Kelly owns the, the other side of the property with the pond and the house, yes. And she's got Christmas trees over there too.
Got you. Brian?
No, I, I agree with Ann. There's no value to the town on this. With this parcel. I suspect, I'm just guessing, the fellow who owns the house, he may end up leaving this under. Agricultural protection and. Work out a deal and have people cut whatever trees are left on it. But I think he bought it for privacy, so.
Gotcha.
We pass.
Tim and Ted?
So, yeah, I think Ann, like Brian just said, I think she covered it, you know, as far as the accessibility of it. It's not great. Like Deb said, it's pretty, it's got a pretty good slope on it as well. And the other thing I'd point out is it's, you know, very significant purchase price that the town would have to match. And. It just seems it's, you know, I think, like it was already said, not the greatest investment of town funds, so. I would not recommend that, you know, the town pursue this right in this case.
So Ted, I'm sure you picked up on this, that when something's under agricultural Chapter 61, or they pay, they pay less taxes. And the deal is when you come out of agricultural tax status, the town has a right of first refusal. There's a rather involved procedure where if the town decides to exercise that, then. The property has to be assessed a certain way and it goes back and forth. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
And our tradition is, well. I don't, I don't want to say it's our tradition. What I've observed since being on the planning board is when you have a parcel that's a particular value because it's. Contiguous with other town-owned land or is an important resource. Then we point that out, but it's up to the Select Board to make the decision. So we, as a planning board, we, we tell them what we think.
Okay.
Let me just, let me, let me amend what I said earlier. I do believe that there is an existing trail that goes across. The, sort of the lot line between these two pieces crosses the power lines and over into the. Christmas trees there. I always like to point out trails and trail easements. And traditional trail usages. You know, they're worthy of note and whether or not landowners can be convinced of creating trail easements to protect them permanently. Is another matter, but I, I think it deserves mention that there is a traditional route across there.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's part of our, our mission to connect trails when we can, to promote that and connect them. Well, very good. Katrina? Do you think you could put together a very simple note? That the planning board noting that this, these parcels are not contiguous with other town-owned land. And are in a generally developed residential area. That from the planning board's perspective, we don't find. What do I want to say?
Benefit.
We don't find a, a, a particular benefit to the town for exercising, exercising their right of first refusal. Something along those lines?
Okay, but I know Deb just mentioned that there is a traditional route across it. Do you, did you want to mention that or just leave it be?
No.
No, it's not formalized, no.
Okay.
And again, you know, the planning board may hear from other town entities. That have compelling arguments that we're just not aware of. And that's, that's why in this process, basically the Select Board. You know, collects as much information as they can before they make their decision.
Okay. All right, I'll put that together and send it off to you for your review.
That'd be great. Thank you. I assume we don't need to make a formal vote on it. It seemed pretty unanimous.
That's advisory.
Yep.
Um, you know what? Why not? Why not?
Okay, then I, I move that we. We, we send a letter to the Board. Noting that this property does not appear to the planning board to be a particular benefit to the town that would merit. Exercising the right to purchase the land.
Okay, yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor? Ray Cook, aye.
Ann Bardine, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Brian Murphy, aye.
Thank you. Alrighty then. Let's see here, there's a button. There it is. Well, we, we went through that pretty quickly. Let's see.
Three minutes.
Yes. Why don't we do a, one of the minutes?
We do not have any minutes.
Oh.
They are not ready yet.
Okay. I thought Ann had said three minutes.
No, there are three minutes to fill.
Gotcha. And then if we received any intriguing correspondence, let's see, we did get the note. From Lisa Mead, which we'll talk about in a minute.
I could bring up some administrative details.
Sure.
Okay, one I just added today. Meridian, their contract is an annual contract. Does the Board weigh in when we sign a new contract? Or do you just want us to keep Meridian as your peer review consultant?
Ah, good point. All right. I don't recall. Thinking about this before, but it makes sense that we review it every time. I think my, my take is that our experience with Meridian has been good and professional. Ann, Brian?
What does the contract include? Does it have?
It's just a, really, in fact, I did talk to Caitlin, who is our, the person in charge of contracts. And the other towns I worked in, we didn't have contracts with our peer review consultant because we use 53G funds. Which means that we're not using town funds. We're really using the applicant's funds. They are just put into the 53G account. And then we take it out. And when the project is done, we return everything with interest to the applicant. So they're not town funds at all. And so she was going to check in to see if we actually even really need the contract. I don't think you do. But you, it doesn't do any harm to have it. What, one thing it will do though is at least it, I'm pretty sure it provides an update of the fees that they charge. Because of course, every year those fees go up and up and up. And so we, it's just good to know and have that list on hand. So that we know what they're charging.
Yeah, makes sense to me. I, I think they instituted this somewhat recently and, and that, that could be in five plus years. That they, they did this and, you know. Like, as, as Ray said, I agree. I think we've been happy with these folks, so.
Yeah, and there may be a situation where it's not just that they're reviewing documents from an applicant. There may be situations where. We consult with them about a bylaw or some other town issue that's not directly related to an application.
Um, I will say, I've asked them, because I know we used to use our peer review and just ask them for favors every once in a while. The traffic scope, we have, I've asked them to look at it and. And make it, tailor it to our needs. And so they're working on that right now. And that's free of charge, just because we provide them with business.
I think there's a bit of a good faith element too, to having the contract.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll get back to you on what, she, she's gonna look into it, probably talk to town council. Or at least our finance director to see if we really need one. And then if, if the Board is leaning towards having a contract. Cause it doesn't do any harm, then I'll just have her draw up a new contract.
It can avoid conflicts of interest too, you know, if they're working for the town. So they'd be working also for developers at the same time.
All right, and I think that got us to the quarter past.
It did indeed. So being 7:16 now. I will go back to our first agenda item, which is the continued public hearing at Zero Middle Street. For a special permit for a reduced frontage lot and scenic roads application. And we received a letter from their attorney, Lisa Mead. Asking for a continuance because the peer review needs more time. So she's asked for a continuance. To our December 17th meeting at 7:00 PM.
We do have Attorney Roberts here on behalf of Lisa Mead.
Very, very good. Wait just a second. Do I need to formally? Open the fact that this public hearing is, we're opening it now?
Yes.
Yeah, and do we have to do a vote on that, Brian?
Yes.
No, now they can't.
No, I mean, a vote on the continuance anyway.
Yeah, well, on that one we will. All right, all right. So, Mr. Roberts. Counselor Roberts.
Just here to make sure that. Make sure everything gets, gets continued to the next, next meeting.
Got you. And the request is to continue it to December 17th at 7:00 PM. But I'd like to suggest rather that we continue it at 7:15 PM. Just to give people a chance to get on Zoom, get things up and running and make sure everybody is in good stead. So I'll make the motion that we continue the public hearing. To December 17th, 2024 at 7:15 PM.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Bardine. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor? Ray Cook, aye.
Ann Bardine, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Ryan Murphy, aye.
Very good, counselor. I think you're all set.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
See you.
See, this is the sort of thing where Zoom is fantastic. We just, we just save the client a ton of money, a ton of hours, right?
Yeah.
Indeed.
All right. Correspondence.
We have no correspondence.
Very good.
Um, I, I, I did send a, a letter around just. Formally recusing myself from deliberations of the property that we just forwarded.
I saw that Deb, and I thought that was, that was a good thing.
Okay.
Just make it all formal and.
Right.
So nobody can question it.
Right.
Let's see. Why don't we jump since we started it? Why don't we jump on the administrative details?
Okay.
Now there's the 2025 schedule.
Yes, does that look good to everyone? Did everyone read through the 2025 Planning Board meeting schedule?
Yes. I have one comment.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm assuming that the July meetings are showing up as the first and the 15th.
Oh, that's too little.
No, I don't think so.
Where are they? Yeah, there they are.
No, it's just one.
Oh, there's just one? Okay, that's what I wondered.
15th.
Okay, I was gonna say, sometimes when we do one, we kind of. Take a tie-breaking week like the 8th, but maybe, maybe this works.
I think this makes sense because of the July 4th weekend, right?
Yeah, right. I was just trying to see how many weeks between the June and the August, but that looks like a pretty even split.
I was also talking to Katrina. And, and mentioned that, you know, if, if summer seems particularly relaxed. We might skip another one. We'll just have to see how things shake out by the time we get there.
Okay. All right, no, it's just July that I wondered about. Okay, thanks.
And I think.
What happens in June? There's only one meeting in June?
You only had one meeting in June?
No, we always have two meetings.
No, we typically will have first and, first and third every month. Yeah.
Yeah.
So why don't we add that June 3rd meeting back in?
Okay.
For now, in any, in any case.
And we're still not gonna do hybrid meetings. We're always gonna do Zoom for the foreseeable future.
I think so, but that's, you know, that's worthy of broader Board discussion.
I know, I'm all for it.
Quite efficient on many levels.
It is.
Um, so, so there was a, there was a meeting and I forget what month it was that the Board mixed things up a little. And your meeting dates were different. And so there isn't any other month you can think of other than the Voting Election Day. Which is November 4th, I think, next year, so that we moved it to Wednesday. Is there any other day that you kind of mix things up?
Really only in July, either July or August, depending on how busy we are and people's vacation schedules. That's my.
Yeah.
I do know I've got two daughters getting married, one in June and one in July next year, so I may be. Away.
Yeah, no problem.
We'll, we'll make do.
We've, we've gone through that before. No problem.
Yeah, and, and we can, again, we can assess where we are as the summer approaches. Very good. So, application notice distribution?
Right, um, so I think it was, Brian, you were in the office and we were talking about. The fact that the, the Select Board had asked me to send them a copy of the application for. Zero Middle Street. Thurlow. And because they, they aren't on the original list of, of departments that we distribute all the applications to. And Brian thought it would be a good idea to have the planning board discuss it to see if we wanted to add, you know, sending something to the Select Board. And I should have probably asked Angus too, to bring it up with the Select Board to see if they want to be sent. The applications. I will say, every single application we do put up on the website, and I don't know if anyone has checked the Planning Board website. It is much clearer to navigate. I haven't cleaned up the MBTA page yet, but the choices on the left are fewer. And I've combined things so that it, at least to me, it makes more sense where to find things. So if anyone was curious and wanted to know what the Planning Board was meeting on in the next couple of weeks. They could find it easily and they could find the application. And we will also post the decisions up there, et cetera.
Yeah, I noticed you, you were posting the packets. I thought that was good.
Yeah, and so you can always access your packet from just the website too.
Right.
It seems to me that that is adequate. I don't know. I mean, the, the Select Board publishes their agenda. You know, I know I get that push email, but. They're the executive. We're just one board or committee. Seems to me, people that want information about boards and committees can look at the website.
Yeah, you know, Jen has also added links to our agenda. So I also get sent notices of agendas when they're posted. And if the link is right on the agenda and that link. Leads you to the application, it's just very easy to see what the Board is covering and to check the application that it's, it's, it has received.
I guess that'd be interesting. Who was it that, who was it that brought it up?
No, it was Angus.
Oh, it was Angus.
I, when I, I dropped in the office and it came up and just talking about stuff, but. I think, I think it was Angus. It may have been Wendy. Expressed, I don't know, a little surprise, it sounded like, that, you know, we, we had a special permit for that parcel on Middle Street. It's, well, you know, they don't need the plans. They could always just get a copy of the front page or something and whatnot. You know, I don't know. It's all in, in the spirit of transparency.
Well, I feel like they have an awful lot on their plates and it's all accessible to them.
Well, I, I think, you know, if they want it, fine. But I mean, I, I, I might suggest that. You know, Katrina pointed out to them that everything's there on the website. Super easy to get every application that we see. Super easy to see what we're going to be considering. But if they, if they want the additional emails or whatever.
Or the paper. So.
Oh, not a paper.
I will say, we need to keep in mind that, that Jen Geary is filling a new position. And we still don't know how much she can do. She's, she's very capable. She knows her job well. But this is the first time we've had a full-time position that covers three different offices. The building, the, the inspectional department. The planning board and the conservation commission. And she is also the clerk to the community preservation committee.
Right.
She's gonna need some Jen Geary president, preservation if she keeps this up. Are you saying that the application needs, it's a paper application they want?
Well, that is what is the distribution list. So the applicant is the one that provides us with all the copies of the applications, I believe. Then those, then Jen will be receiving the full application. She's the one that brings it to all these offices. And they're not all in town hall too, you know, police, fire, et cetera. I think she may put them in their mailboxes downstairs, so I'm not sure yet.
Let's, let's just ask Angus, okay, and see what he's looking for.
And I, I would, you know. Do we, do we need these multiple copies in, in physical paper form?
Yes. Yeah.
So it, it, so you, that's something that you can talk about. I know in the last town I worked. We worked hard to get rid of that requirement because we were requiring 21 full copies of full-size plans. Some of them came and they were, you know, 100 or 200 pages thick because they had traffic reports in them.
Yeah, yeah.
We were getting big boxes to distribute. And we finally ended up in the end with, it was, it was all online.
So Brian, you were real quick to say that you want, that you think we need paper.
That, that's not our decision. That's a discussion that should be had with each one of these parties that receive these documents. And whether they would like to continue to receive paper documents or receive some sort of an online document. For me personally, when I, I love to look at a full-size plan. It just, it makes life a lot easier for me, but maybe that's, that's old school.
Well, no, there's nothing wrong with old school and there's nothing wrong with preferring paper. But on the other hand, if, if, let's say the fire department. If, if they would be happy to just look online or, or, you know, if there's just one. One full document that goes to the, the, the fire department building, the fire police department building where they. I mean, if there's a way to reduce the physical paper that's being used. That people don't mind. I mean, it's one thing if you prefer it, but if people don't mind.
The applicant is doing this, not nobody in town. It, it's not, no one town employee is making these copies.
I understand that, but somebody in town has to walk them around.
Yeah, it's insignificant. It's like delivering the mail.
So I think this is probably a good discussion for when we think about revising the Board's regulations. Subdivision and your special permit and site plan regulations, because that's when you would have to, have to make these changes.
Gotcha. Well, in the short term, let's find out what Angus wants.
Okay.
And. And as far as water cooler conversations that, that pop up, I mean, you might just. Kind of broach the subject with Angus. You know, about keeping the paper or not, you know. I don't, I don't know. It just strikes me as the sort of thing where you could get, maybe get a feel for it, for what people.
People feel strongly one way or the other, and I agree, it's easier to read plans, although I don't want them in my office or my house afterwards. It is a lot of paper and we see a lot of it wasted. And so. Um, it is a lot of paper and we see a lot of it wasted. And so in the end, there was like two holdout ZBA members that wanted paper and we would provide paper to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that, that, that maybe we could do that.
Copies.
That, so that, that the people that feel strongly about it and want paper, they keep getting paper. But maybe, maybe there's, maybe we could just reduce the numbers of copies and whatnot.
Can we think of this as a two-part uh inquiry, one to Angus narrowly defined to see what the interest of the select board is?
In receiving paper applications.
And the other for us as a planning board or Katrina to perhaps ask all the people who are on the distribution list if they have a preference. Because I think that's a decision that the board should make. That's not really Angus's, you know, purview. We're managing that, so.
And, and that, I think maybe what I'll do is maybe put a questionnaire together or something along those lines and then that would be a, we would have to conduct it at a regular board meeting, but if you're changing your regular rules, not your, if you're changing your subdivision rules, we'd have to hold a public hearing.
Right, but if it's rules and regulations, yeah, we can do it that way.
Okay. Um, and then the next thing I had was, did anyone read the MBTA frequently asked questions? Um, the changes?
Yeah.
Um, let's see, I have a.
I got it.
Oh, good.
Is that big enough?
No.
No, okay. Let's see if I can.
You see, maybe I can. Oh, there we go. Yeah, okay, thanks. Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so um actually, Ray, I have a copy here that I've highlighted the changes.
Oh, okay, let me stop the share, hand it back over to you.
Um, if I can do it as fast as you. Can everyone see that?
Now we can?
No.
No, I.
Too small.
Bigger, please.
We need it bigger.
Yes, you just wait, you just wait.
There you go. Often the, uh, the mouse wheel, you hold control.
There we go, that's good.
You, this is, this is, this big for me. Right, because I have this huge screen in front of me. It's enormous. I'm gonna have to back up.
Um, well, I don't have it.
So you, it, did someone say they could not see it?
No, it's fine.
Now we can.
It's good, yeah.
So the, the questions, the frequently asked questions in black, we already had. Um, I added the ones in color. And so I added this one just because I thought it, the question maybe raised, I, I, I was just at our Raleigh town meeting where they shot down the MBTA zoning last week. Um, and there was, there was a lot of um negativity about, you know, being forced to do this and we don't have to do this. So I thought we should probably answer that question. Um, whether it's legal for the state to even do that. And I guess we'll know more in January too, um, on whether they have the right to do this. And so does everyone um agree with this?
Well, I, I haven't read it. I, I didn't know this was a change.
Oh, okay. So, all right, then what I, what I can do is just send it out to everyone again and keep the track changes so that you can see the changes I made?
Yeah, that, that would be very helpful because I, I, I just, I just skimmed it, but I didn't know there had been changes made.
Okay, all right.
I would say offhand, thank you, because uh, yeah, I think it's good to have this stuff.
Katrina, are there any other ones you want to point out that you updated?
Yeah, I can send it out and it'll.
Yeah, no, I know, but I just, well, we have you.
Why we should comply with the law, what we're gonna lose.
Yes.
Okay.
And how and when must we comply with the law? Um, that wasn't in it. Um, and that's some, some simple information that we do need to provide.
Yeah.
And then this is for the people that are, that have heard from their neighbors, oh my God, you gotta go to this, this meeting and they know nothing about anything, you know, what is zoning? What is a zoning district? What is an overlay district? Um, et cetera. I thought we may as well give them that information because this is something that's just gonna be accessed by people who need to learn more. Um, not everyone is gonna read this.
Where'd you get the definition for multifamily? Just curious.
I believe that, I don't even think I changed that one, even though it's highlighted here.
Okay.
I think that's right in our zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And then what is by right and as-of-right development too? Because that's a, that's a big difference, you know, when you hear zoning, you think um nothing's by right. Um, but think, some things are by special permit, um and they need special um permission. And this new zoning is going to be by right and so we need to.
That's a good point, yeah.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I think this is just a little language. Um, just fixing the language there. What is proposed? Or where will it be located?
Mm hmm.
Um, and then.
You know, up there on um, uh, let's see, is it likely that all eighty-seven units would be built?
Yes. Is that before?
Yeah, it's up there a little bit.
You mean up?
Yeah, scroll back.
Yeah, right there. What I would add to your list of things that can affect it.
Yeah.
I would, I would add profitability or economics. So soils, topography, water pressure, wetland, septic requirements, profitability?
Econom- You want me to add?
Economics?
Econ, I, yeah.
Okay. So after septic requirements, maybe add and economics.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why we've never had a big development in town because it's never made sense to do so.
Yeah, and I would expect you to stand up and say that at a town meeting.
I could do that.
Yeah.
Sounds like a Deb statement.
It does. People have to respect Deb's experience here. How, how, how many years have you?
I did real estate for forty years.
Yeah. And how long have you, how long have you been on town boards and stuff?
Since nineteen eighty-nine, I got on the Melton Committee.
There you go.
Yeah, I was on Concom for twenty years and.
See?
Yep. I know, everybody's.
So we can um.
So I added site plan review too, that site plan review was required, just to spell that out.
Yeah.
Um, and that's it. No, I.
On the site plan review uh that you added.
Yeah.
Let me just, uh, above the bottom two covers matter. And I would add safety to your list there. So site plan approval criteria typically covers matters such as vehicular access, circulation and safety.
Mm hmm. That's a good buzz for.
Vehicular access and circulation.
No, just take out the first, take out your and.
Or put it in front of the and, put a comma after access.
Yeah, comma, safety, comma, and, well, Oxford comma or no, I'm, I'm.
Always.
Always.
Thank you.
What did you call that?
The Oxford comma.
I always put the comma.
Yeah.
There you go.
See, you can tell what age we are. I'm sorry. Don't ask Ted.
Um, very good. So uh, folks, do you think we could kind of provide more feedback at our next meeting on this?
Yeah, although I just want to say now, I think this is great, Katrina. I did read it and I think you're absolutely right about sort of the zoning one-on-one. Because people, I think what happens is people come to meetings like this oftentimes who are not, who are understandably not particularly informed and they feel like we're just throwing jargon around.
Right.
Yeah.
When we say by right and multifamily.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The more fundamental, you know, nomenclature and explanations that we provide.
That, by the way, Ann, is the classic professor mistake.
Yeah.
Going to lecture and use a bunch of language that your students don't know yet.
Yeah, makes everyone very unhappy and it sort of stops all learning, so.
It certainly does.
Yeah, so I think.
Planners are guilty of that with the, all our acronyms.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, and uh, so there, I also wanted to remind the board that they do have a joint meeting next Tuesday with the select board and it'll be in person. Um, they do have a Zoom component though. I'm waiting for their Zoom link so that I can add it to our agenda because we'll have to post that before the end of this week.
What time is that set for?
I believe it's seven o'clock.
And what's the topic?
MBTA.
This is um, it's just, the only thing on the agenda is a discussion of the two proposed sites for the MBTA three A zoning. Um, the board will be discussing and hopefully choosing one of them. And so I would hope that all the board members will review the zoning again in the coming week. Um, maybe write down, jot down a list of the pros and cons for each of them. I think it's gonna be hard for all of you because from the discussions I've heard in the past, um, I could hear one person argue for a lot and then argue against it in the next minute. You know, there's, there's just a lot of pros and cons.
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think um, there's, I, I would doubt highly there'll be a consensus on a site. I think we're gonna hear how everybody feels. And Wendy's suggestion was to uh, maybe we all take, take back the information to our respective boards and, and uh, for further discussion or whatnot. I cannot imagine us coming to a decision.
Well, at some point, whether it's as a joint group or whether it's by individual boards, at some point, we're gonna have to. Well, I, I can only think of uh, rather inappropriate expressions from my granddad about
That's right.
making a decision, but we're, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. It, it has, I, I frankly, I think it's premature, but that's my opinion.
Yeah. We are, we are running out of time though. I mean, we gotta.
Aren't we waiting for a traffic report and for financial reports?
Where's the traffic report?
We haven't even.
Have the traffic report in time.
For what?
We haven't even sent out the RFQ yet for the traffic report.
What?
I've been talking about this since the summer. Yikes.
How is that possible?
I don't know.
Um, we are, we are waiting for, like I said, we are waiting for Meridian to come back with us and revise the traffic scope. I had the scope done, you know, a month and a half ago. Um, but um.
The scope was based on other traffic studies and it was pretty involved. And to do it for two sites had the uh, select board kind of thinking twice.
Well, it's gonna be a crucial part of, of townspeople making a decision, so we need the information.
Now, would that report include like accident data and things like that, or is it just like counts?
Well, the counts are already done along Main Street because of other studies.
Right.
There are recent traffic counts available. Um, but you know, sightline and impacts and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Do, do they have like accident data? Because I know that some people are concerned with that one intersection.
Um.
I believe.
No, I don't even know him.
I've seen it, I've seen it elsewhere in town by uh, by intersection.
Any consultant should get, be able to get that pretty easily. But we gotta get this and, and, you know, we'll, we'll talk to Angus.
I talked to him today about it and I said, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a little antsy um because we were, my original schedule had the um, the quotes or the proposals due on December first. We should have been receiving, you know, the proposals at this point. We haven't even sent it out yet, so um, but I can only go so far. Um, you know, I'm being held back, but for good reason. But hopefully we get it out soon.
And what about the fi- the fiscal impact?
We are meeting, Angus and I are meeting tomorrow afternoon. Um, and so we, they should have a proposal for us, um, the, the study done. Um, and so we'll, we'll see then how much more work it needs, but it should be wrapped up.
Well, we can talk about all this a week from tonight when we're.
Yes, I, I, I think all of that will definitely be on the table.
Um, and a, a longer related um line, on Thursday um, at one o'clock, the MVPC is doing a Zoom meeting.
Yes.
Um, and Brian volunteered to attend. I'm planning to attend. Um, and other members, of course, are more than welcome to attend.
Well, then it would be a meeting that we'd have to.
What's the topic?
Uh, it, it, it's um, for MVPC to uh, kind of clarify what the town's expectations are in terms of their involvement. Um, Angus is attending as well.
In general or in some project?
So MVPC.
Or MB, the MBTA. He had asked that they be available to write up a, you know, a, a, a document for use at the public hearings as to the, you know, the impact on the town and, and whatnot, kind of synthesizing all of the information that, that has been developed. Um, similar to the document that they produced for the town of Newbury um, at their town meeting.
Well, their noses may be a bit out of joint because we hired Dodson and Flinker to do.
No, 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 it's not.
They don't care about that? And why aren't we having Dodson and Flinker do this wrap-up document?
Because Angus and Wendy feel that Dodson and Flinker's response at the public hearings was less than optimal.
Really?
Yes.
I like that.
They did not think that they, they addressed the uh, public commentary in, in a meaningful way. Um, so they suggest that MVPC, MVPC has some, some time available. And uh.
Well, I hadn't, I hadn't thought, Katrina, about the fact that if other people attend the meeting, then suddenly it's a planning board meeting.
Yeah, I think you can only limit it to two people.
So that's fine. So uh, Brian and I can attend that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely report back on Tuesday night.
Exactly. It seems to me it's just fact-finding and you can tell us on Tuesday what happens, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if, I forget who's seen what, but their little document for Newbury, I thought was good.
Yeah, it was, I, I agree. I did, it was a nice two-page or so summary. I don't know what they produced for Raleigh, uh, didn't sway them.
No, they didn't, they didn't, they weren't even allowed to speak. They weren't even allowed to present.
Oh, no.
And moved the motion and.
Really?
Discussion. And it was two twenty-nine to one ninety-one, so.
Yeah, it was close.
My husband and I went, um, you know, but so, because it was, it wasn't as far apart as I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, they're very vocal. The opposition is very vocal and the people voting for it are totally quiet.
Mm hmm. Hmm. Yeah, well, I know, you know, even.
I can see how their input um could be combined with the fact that we're looking at now too. I think there's some overlap there in the Venn diagram.
Yes.
And we can end up with a nice document for, for West Newbury residents. Recognizing, of course, that some people are going to be close-minded about it. But for those people that want to learn more, uh, it'll be good to have that.
Um, the board realizes that it may not be unanimous how between the board members, which site to pick, right?
Oh, of course.
Sure.
Okay. As long as you all support the, whatever is picked in the end, but um, from what I have heard from the board members, it's, it's kind of split. Um, and so, and it's okay for it not to be unanimous, I think.
You know, usually, in the past, Katrina, we, we tend to agree with each other, but there have been plenty of, you know, tough subjects in the past where, you know, it's come down to a three to two kind of thing and, you know. We all get to say our piece and in the end, the vote is the vote.
Right.
Which, that's right. I mean, I think it's unfortunate about this traffic study that
Yeah.
That was uh, going to be an inter- an integral part of a decision-making process. If, if there's one thing or another that was gonna sway uh, people.
You know what? Um, Angus made a good point today. It's actually good to choose which one because right now, the way it's written, they're doing a traffic study for both sites.
Yeah, but that's.
We can reduce it.
At, at, at this point, we just gotta get this done. If it's for two sites, it's for two sites.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they have the money, right? They should just.
It just has to. Very hesitant, they're very hesitant about the money.
Well, th- then he's, he better get off the. Well, th- then he's, he better get off the, you know.
Time, we'll say.
His grandfather. Yeah.
If you back, you back to.
This thing needs to get done and I don't see us coming up, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I think there's at least a member on the, on the select board who's not even sure this is a, the whole thing is a good idea.
I mean.
Okay.
I, I will, I will say this, Brian. I mean, I, I agree with you and I think it's critical that the traffic study be in. Um, probably for both sites by the time we go to the next public hearing on all this stuff before Springtown meeting. Um, but be, but uh, between us squirrels here, uh, we're very familiar with the sites and we're very familiar with the kind of traffic issues that have come up in other developments along one thirteen. So I think it won't, it won't be reassuring to the public, but as far as our internal discussion, I think we can make some reasonable speculation on some of it. When we're considering.
Yeah.
But you know, again, when you get, when it come to any kind of public hearing, things like Tim mentioned accidents and all this kind of stuff, people aren't gonna try. People that are disinclined to are not going to trust anybody here. Because they think this is, you know, government overreach to begin with.
Right.
All right. Let's see here.
And I think um, that's it. Uh, we, I've got a couple more meetings next week. Um, meeting with um, the Essex County Trails Association, Carol Lloyd, about the trail connection in, connection at Major Boyd.
Yeah, good.
Road to the town property. Um, uh, Clay and I went out the conservation agent last week and we walked that um, site and took pictures. Uh, we're trying to figure out the best, the best connection because we do have to revise the easement. Um, and Mike Crowe, I believe is the.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, he's open to ha- revise, having that revised too. Um, we just have to point out exactly where we need it.
I was just curious, why does it need to be revised?
It needs to be revised because the easement, as shown, cuts across private property. And we need to get it off private property. And then it needs to go around the corner of the private property and stay on public land.
I, I have a comment about that project, but I don't want to. If you have other comments about that parcel, Katrina.
Other comments?
On, on Major Boyd Drive.
Well, you took a walk out there and I just asked you what, what you thought of it.
Oh, what? I think of the, the land out there?
Yeah, and the, having a trail back there. I mean, it's nice, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's really nice. I think a couple trees may have to come down because if it's twenty feet off the rock wall, all the trees were right along the rock wall, but you could fit a trail through there. Um, beautiful stone walls everywhere. Um, it is a little wet. There is, Mike Crowe had mentioned that um, he would have accessed the public land kind of straight across and not gone. I'm sorry, I'm going south. But it's just all brambles. It's um, is it called Rosa? Some kind of rose variety?
Randiflora rose.
Covered with it, um, which is really difficult. And even if you cut through it, it grows back quickly. So I, I think the original root, but just keeping it off private property is probably the best route.
And Brian, you were gonna say something?
Well, yeah, I, I was, I was at Long Hill recently looking across and, you know, I haven't gone back and looked at the plans. Um, I think we waived the fact of planting any trees or a tree or two along the drive, the road in.
I don't think so. I think there are supposed to be trees, aren't there?
I, I, I can't remember, but it, it strikes me that a couple or three trees or something might, might help.
Yeah, the problem I think we ran into is both side, if I remember right, is the, the water retention.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I, I'm thinking something just like a statement tree. I, I, I don't know, it just looks, it's just something missing a little bit.
Well, I think, I think in an emergency, you could land a plane on that.
So maybe, I, I guess I wanted to ask Katrina to maybe add to her list of, just pull out the, 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 the final plan and see if there was supposed to be any trees planted there.
So that would have been a waiver probably, right?
It was very open to begin with.
It was.
Yes, it was.
It was just a wet field.
It's just a little too straight and stark.
Well, the trees are usually the last thing to go in on.
And I'll bet that Mike, Mike Crowe
Yeah.
Could be amenable to a couple of three trees.
Well, I was gonna say, just for his marketing, you know, it would just soften the, and make, you know, a better entrance.
Something, yeah, we don't need, it doesn't need to be lined and I know there's the drainage ditches there and whatnot.
The ponds, the retention ponds.
Something, but.
He, he is very nice.
Yeah, so anyway, maybe you could report back to us on that if there are in fact any trees noted on the plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Like a deciduous tree, Brian?
I, I was actually thinking of a couple of evergreens or something.
Oh, okay. Cause I think they took down pines for that road.
Yeah, the, yeah, you're right. You're, you're right.
I remember walking out there that day.
Yeah, there, there were some big old pine trees there.
Very good.
And that's it for me.
Okay, including uh, the possibility of a town planner report. Seems like you've sort of given us your town planner report here.
Yeah, that, I kind of went through all the upcoming meetings and that was my report.
Very good. And we've uh, the next item is placement of items for future planning board agendas, but I think we've done that. Um, just in the course of this meeting. I'm, I, there's a pregnant pause here for anybody to chime in. No?
We're through.
Yep.
So just don't forget next Tuesday's meeting. I, I will be sending out the agenda, though.
Okay.
Well, all right then, if uh, if there's no objections, I suggest I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor, Ray Kogai?
Brian Murphy, aye. Yep.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Well done, Ray.
All right.
Bye, everyone.
Well, that's, that's just happy coincidence. I'm complaining from Katrina, so.
Thank you, Katrina.